Welcome and good evening and happy new year. You are in attendance this evening to the annual reorganization meeting. Today is Wednesday, January 5th, 2020. The time is 6:00 PM and we are at the Sussex County Community College Performing Arts Center. For the record, the following commissioners are present this evening. Commissioner Carney, Commissioner Fantasia, Commissioner Fasano, and Commissioner Yardley. Commissioner Patillo is absent. I welcome Reverend Michael Vincent Ricardi, deacon, Our Lady Queen of Peace, to the podium for tonight's invocation, followed by a moment of silent prayer from Commissioner Fantasia.
Holy gracious one, we give you thanks for the moment, to pause and reflect on what this really momentous day is. Looking back, we can see in many ways you have prepared these leaders, answer the call of your work in this county in this moment, and we give you thanks. As we pause, we begin to see how their work will intersect and weave in the work of men and women who have come before, and for all their efforts and passion, we also give you thanks. On this day, of the official new beginning, we look forward to the ways that will lead and guide these commissioners. Answering the call of public service, putting your family name and reputation out for a vote, braving the fickleness, the divisiveness in the public discussion of your work, these things are not easy for our leaders or their families. We ask that you fill them with humility, courage, faithfulness, persistence, and a sense of humor, as they will desperately need it in days and months and years to come. Be with the family members and these commissioners, as work means missing ballgames, interrupting delayed vacations, and errands that take forever between conversations. May these leaders never take themselves too serious. May they never take their work too consistently, and may they never take the word on the street too personally. Instead, give them the ears to hear the story that gets the truth that needs in our county, and the excitement and opportunity of the people of this county. Give them the eyes to see the little things that make the biggest difference in a people's lives, to look past the distractions, to make real progress that's impossible. Give them the minds, the sharp, eager to learn from one another, as well count as the well and wise counsel, to provide their colleagues, staff, support teams, and Sussex County employees, and outside experts. Lord, give them the hearts of the full compassion for those whose voices are too long to be silent, and those who have access to the power has been limited. We pray this day for those that make this county the kind of place that we raise our children, open business, visit festivals, and maybe even to retire. And we lift up all that lived and worked in the bounds of this county. It goes without saying that the aligning with the wants, needs, and expectations, hopes, and dreams of those who have voted to bring this group together is almost impossible. Mixing the reality and time, budgets and processes, it would be more than a miracle to make everyone happy. Rather than to ask a particular miracle, God, I offer a simple request. May grace abound from above and below; may grace abound from within and without; may grace abound from this moment onward, in the ways of healing, reconciliation, inclusion, empowerment, and unity. May these commissioners remember always that they and your children, coming together in a work to make this world and this people in a whole desire in their hearts, and the truth and glory to be revealed, and may the truth of this commission, of this county, and all who have called on your name on this day and always. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Now we'll have a moment of silent prayer with comments from Commissioner Fantasia.
Each meeting, we recognize an individual or a group of individuals for our moment of silence tonight. I'd like to keep in mind Mrs. Lois Marples. She is the wife of Ellis Marples, who is the president of the Hardeston Republican Club. Sadly, she lost her brave battle with cancer over the holiday break, so I ask that you keep their family in your prayers tonight.
We will now follow with the salute to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 Public Law 1975, adequate notice as defined by Section 3D of Chapter 231 Public Laws 1975 has been made by email on September 15th, 2021, as per authorization of the Board and per notice, which was posted and emailed from the administrative offices of the County of Sussex, located in the Administrative Center, 1 Spring Street, Newton, New Jersey, to the following New Jersey Herald, New Jersey Sunday Herald, The Star-Ledger, WNNJ Radio, and WSUS Radio, and is also posted on the bulletin board, maintained in the Administrative Center for public announcements, and has been submitted to the Sussex County Clerk in compliance with said act. Please at this time mute all devices. At this time, I invite County Clerk Jeffrey M. Parrott to the podium for the determination statement for the November 2nd, 2021 election.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to thank everybody before I start for coming out tonight. I wish everybody health and happiness in the upcoming new year, and certainly health in today's day and age, what we're going through. And I wish the commissioners all the best. As the Reverend said, the smallest task can lead to the biggest achievement, and I expect a lot out of the Board this year, and I believe that both on the county level and state level, we're going to do very well. So without further ado, I'm going to move to read the statement of determination. Statement of determination of the Board of County Canvassers relative to the election held in County of Sussex and State of New Jersey for the election of certain officers for the said county on the second day of November 2021. The said Board does determine that at the said election of the following officers, Jeffrey M. Parrott was duly elected to a five-year term as county clerk. Two, Dawn Fantasia was duly elected as county commissioner for a three-year term. Three, Christopher Carney was elected county commissioner for a three-year term. I do hereby certify that the foregoing is true, full, and correct statement of the determination of Board of Canvassers therein mentioned and witness whereof I have here to set my hand this 22nd day of November 2021. Jeffrey M. Parrott, Sussex County Clerk, Alan P. Lengar, chairperson, Board of County Canvassers. I have hereon too set my hand and affixed the seal of the said county at Newton on the 22nd day of November 2021, as the county clerk attesting thereof. I have, although I was elected at the same time as the commissioners, I've already been sworn in. For many people aren't aware of it, as a constitutional officer, we usually are sworn in right after we're elected, because I have to go in and swear everybody else in, and if I have to wait for this night, I can't go out and swear anybody in. So they let us go early, so I've already been done in that regard. So with the oath of office, Teresa?
If you'll just step aside, I'm going to have Dawn Fantasia sworn in first, for your rule of administer the oath to Chris Carney.
Okay, so I'm going to sit down again.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm going to put this here.
Sure. Next, I invite Commissioner Fantasia to the podium to be sworn in as a member of the Sussex County Board of County Commissioners by Tom Proll, for a three-year term, said term to begin immediately and expire December 31st, 2024. What I've done to help you, Tom, is I made a, I'll let me on the script. I know I've been using it. So, oh, you want to use mine? Okay. So, nope, hold on. That's the wrong one. This one. So this is the enlarged and the attached is what she looks like. And I'm going to just step out of the photo op. Thank you. So where do I stand? Where did I? Closer to you? Okay. You guys are here. Okay, I think.
Are you?
Okay. How are you?
So you're going to repeat after me?
We need the bottle?
Yeah.
Do I raise which hand?
Raise your right hand, put your left hand on this prescription.
Switch. It's like we've never done this before. All right.
I, Dawn Fantasia.
I, Dawn Fantasia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
Of the office of Commissioner, Sussex County Board of County Commissioners.
Of the office of Commissioner, Sussex County Board of County Commissioners.
To fulfill a three-year term.
To fulfill a three-year term.
Said term to expire.
Said term to expire.
December 31st, 2024.
December 31st, 2024.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Again, I invite County Clerk Jeff Parrott to the podium to administer the oath of office to Commissioner Chris Carney. There's a large script for you. There's one that you can sign. I'll step away. Going to have your, oh, got your pen.
Chris, you can put your left hand on a Bible, raise your right hand, and you can repeat after me. I, Christopher Carney.
I, Christopher Carney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True.
True.
Faith.
Faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of.
Commissioner.
Commissioner.
Sussex County Board.
Sussex County Board.
Of County Commissioners.
Of County Commissioners.
To fulfill.
To fulfill.
A three-year.
A three-year.
Term.
Term.
Said term.
Said term.
To expire.
To expire.
December 31st, 2024.
December 31st, 2024.
To which I have been.
To which I have been.
Elected.
Elected.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
At this time, I call for the appointment of the Director of the Board of County Commissioners. Do I hear a nomination, Board Director?
I nominate Anthony Fasano.
I'll second that.
Thank you, but I have to ask, are there any other nominations? None. Do I have a motion for Mr. Fasano to serve as the 2022 Director of the Board of County Commissioners?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Shall I take your second?
And I will second that, yes.
Any comments? The roll call vote. Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Patillo is absent. Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Congratulations. Would you like to step forward and be administered your oath of office as Director?
Sure.
I'll have County Clerk Parrott. I had to be prepared.
Just in case.
You never know, right? Okay, so this is yours. Enlarged. This is the oath of design. I will take these out of the way, and then the pen, get them out of the way again. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Anthony, I'm going to ask you to repeat after me. I, Anthony Fasano.
I, Anthony Fasano.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True.
True.
Faith.
Faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Director.
Of Director.
Sussex County.
Sussex County.
Board.
Board.
Of County Commissioners.
Of County Commissioners.
To fulfill.
To fulfill.
A one-year.
A one-year.
Term.
Term.
Said term.
Said term.
To expire.
To expire.
December.
December.
31st.
31st.
2022.
2022.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Anthony, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
From your chair, would you like to?
Sure.
Pick up item nine.
Thank you. Item nine on our agenda is the appointment of Deputy Director of the Board of County Commissioners for the year 2022. Do I hear any nomination for Deputy Director? You do, that would be me, and I would like to nominate Commissioner Carney for Deputy Director. Is there a second for that motion?
I will second that motion.
Commissioner Yardley seconds that motion. Are there any other nominations?
I'll make a motion to close the nominations.
There's a motion to close the nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
Terry, can you please call the roll?
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Commissioner Fasano?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Congratulations. Commissioner Carney, would you like to do your oath?
Yes, sir. I feel like it was just here.
Fantasia, whoo, right. Very good. Okay. Am I going to take this one?
Because I got it down the first time.
Okay, Chris, if you would, repeat after me, please. I, Christopher Carney.
I, Christopher Carney.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will.
That I will.
Support the Constitution.
Support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of New Jersey.
Of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear.
And that I will bear.
True faith.
True faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform.
Perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Deputy Director.
Of Deputy Director.
Sussex County Board.
Sussex County Board.
Of County Commissioners.
Of County Commissioners.
To fulfill.
To fulfill.
A one-year term.
A one-year term.
Said term.
Said term.
To expire.
To expire.
December 31st, 2022.
December 31st, 2022.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Chris, congratulations.
Okay. Item number 10 on our agenda is the approval of our agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Deputy Director Carney motions. Thank you, Terry. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Standing? Motion carries. Item number 11 on our agenda is the recognition of our dignitaries here and Commissioner remarks. So before we get into our Commissioner remarks, I did just want to recognize a few of the dignitaries that I saw here. First and foremost, our Senator Steve Orojo is here. Our Assemblyman Hal Worthes is here. We have our Sheriff Mike Strata, who's here. We have our State Committee Man Bill Hayden, who's here. We have Deputy Mayor Silverthorn from Frankfurt, who's here. We have Committee Man Civitan from Frankfurt, who's here. We also have one of the best school board members in the state, Nick DiAgostino, who is here. And we have a host of our county professionals, including our auditors, who are here as well. Hi, Ray, and Ray. Did I miss anybody? Did I miss anybody? And of course, if I didn't, you're all dignitaries here, and thank you for being here. So we're going to go into Commissioner comments, and this time, we are going to start to my right with Commissioner Yardley.
Thank you, Anthony. First of all, I'd like to thank somebody who's been with me a very long time and has come to many of these meetings and who has supported me, put up with me. That's my wife, Pat. I know that you're all thinking, how does she do it? Well, all I can say is wonders will never cease. I'd like to thank, congratulate Anthony Fasano as our new director and our Deputy Commissioner, Chris Carney. I'm looking forward to working with both of you. I'm sure you'll both do a fine job. I'd like to thank Dawn Fantasia for the hard work and time she put in last year as Director, and Sylvia, who's not here, for the hard work that she does here at the county. Tonight, I thought I would reflect on some of the things I've observed since the beginning of COVID. Couple of reminders from 2020 into 2021. I can't list them all. If I did, we'd be here for several hours, and I know all of you would really like that, but maybe next time. What some of you may not know is that when COVID happened, it was federal money, and Sussex County was cut out of that funding. And yes, we did get it later on, but we had to fight for it. The county had to go out and work on our out looking for test kits that were originally promised by the governor, and we had to prepare for testing. It was a daunting task, but it got done. The county set it up on its own testing sites and started planning for vaccination sites. With the help of Sheriff Strata and his department, the Sussex County Health Department, and the fairgrounds providing the Richards Building, vaccination started. The sheriff opened up the office of emergency management, ran it for 24 hours a day, and with the help of volunteers, the MRC Medical Reserve Corps, the CERT, the Sussex County Community Emergency Response Team trained by the Sheriff Strata's department, and other volunteers to drive through open. It sounds pretty simple, but there was a lot of work that went into that, and it took a long time, a lot of logistics. Volunteers showed up and came out and worked side by side with the county employees. They worked in the rain, the snow. They worked in the rain, the snow, they stood in the cold weather, and showed up time after time. And they are being called upon once again as we face this new variant. The county pulled together, the county COVID clinic started without the support of the hospital. After the clinics closed down, the Health Department continued to provide booster shots with pop-up clinics. We witnessed the death of nursing home patients and the state not responding to public health nursing emails nor to any requests from the county. I always had faith in the New Jersey public health system, having worked in it. But I had to read how dysfunctional the state Health Department was, as reported in the newspaper. And no one knew where the governor was getting his COVID information. Zoom Commissioner meetings, the commissioners, at the Zoom Commissioning meetings, the commissioners were attacked in an attempt to disrupt a meeting and to hinder the work of the commissioners. Our federal government was funding testing on beagle puppies to de-vocalize them in testing situations. No, it's not. Yes, it is. Who's watching this? COVID has changed our lives, closed businesses caused, Zoom meeting moves, moved schools to online education. But through it all last year, Sussex County remained strong and resilient. Engineering Department continued to develop plans for bridges, capital projects, roads got plowed, guardrails got put up, employees continued to work. County cars and trucks were repaired and ready to take on the winter. These were some of our essential workers, and they did a great job. Just think about working under a vehicle or a truck that just came out from the highway after plowing, ice, wet, and you're working on it. Social Services continued to provide services to our seniors, veterans, and other residents, and made special arrangements to get seniors vaccinated. They continued to serve hot meals through our Grab and Go program to those at risk. Held virtual meetings with many seniors to maintain safety for our most vulnerable population. The Food Bank continued to provide food to those that were in need. It's volunteers that made a lot of these things happen, too. Everyone in public health worked to the point of exhaustion, which include the weights and measures department, the mosquitoes, the environmental department. Sussex County Skyline rides continued to provide busing service for the residents to get to their doctors and food and shopping. The county clerk continued to provide services, including in-person passports, the office did not close. The Sussex County Chamber of Commerce held COVID-19 briefings every week to the businesses and the community, and continues to do so. I wish I could mention all of the people that contributed to the things that happened in the county during COVID. And I apologize to anyone that I may have forgotten or missed. To my fellow commissioners, you did an outstanding job this year through all of the COVID events that happened. We do have to remember to support our small businesses, our restaurants, the delis, the local businesses, and remember one big thing, we have to support each other. I'd like to say thank you for coming tonight, for letting me have some of the time to express my thoughts and feelings. I assure you, I work hard, as I have in the past, and support Anthony and Chris as they lead this board into the new year. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Commissioner Yardley, and next we'll move on to Commissioner Fantasia.
Thank you. Welcome, I'd first like to offer some thanks to some special people. First, my girls, thank you for coming here tonight, Maria and Lila, my parents and my son Aiden could not be here this evening due to health reasons, but they're here in spirit. Thank you to the District 24 legislative team, we have Senator Orojo, Assemblyman Wirths in space, who never skip a beat in demanding equity and resources for our district here in Sussex County, and Sheriff Strata, who also heads the Office of Emergency Management, which ensures an immediate response to protect the public. County Clerk Jeff Parrott, who masterfully navigated the ever-changing mandates in election law here in New Jersey, and the County Surrogate Gary Chisano, who maintained consistent services in the midst of this health crisis. A big thank you to Tom Pearl, thank you for being here tonight and swearing me in. This has got to be three, maybe four, Tom's a native of Franklin, and he was our attorney in Franklin, and he's a dear friend of mine, and thank you for coming tonight, it means a lot that you came. I'd like to appreciate and recognize the hard work put forth by our department heads and our county employees, they're our heart and soul, they're adaptable, they're hard working, and they're kind, and they always put the needs of the residents first. God bless them for all they do. Thank you to our Administrator Greg Paff, who's accessible to us 24/7 and works to meet the goals and objectives set forth by the board, and our Clerk Terry Lyons and Clerk Protem Suzie Javon for their support. And to our Attorney Doug Steinhardt, whose principled legal guidance has been invaluable this year to the board. Our CFO Elka Yetter, who keeps us appraised and up to the minute on any and all opportunities to increase savings to the county and to maintain fiscal responsibility. And to Carol Novret, the Administrator for the Department of Health and Human Services. Carol is my right hand, she's my go-to, and she's my rock through health crises and beyond. To the Sussex GOP and our campaign team who supported us and ensured our message of service and conservative values reached the voters, and thank you, Bill, for being here tonight as well. And last, and probably most importantly, thank you to the voters of Sussex County, who have now entrusted me with Term Two to serve on this board. The College has graciously granted us use of this space for the past year and this evening, and for future use until we're able to return to our standard meeting space in the county building, we thank Dr. Connolly and his staff for that. And as I completed year three of my first term and began the first year of my second term, it's paramount to stay true to the issues this board has set forth to address and the goals we set out to accomplish. I thank Herb and Sylvia and Anthony and Chris, I can't imagine a better, more principled group of people to work alongside, especially in crisis. So when we look at Maslow's hierarchy of needs, our priorities are pretty clear. As we establish our goals tonight, we again agree on the guiding principle, differentiating needs versus wants, in order to promote affordability while providing comprehensive services to the county residents. As Herb mentioned, beginning in March of 2020, our county officials received a steady stream of reports from employees, family members, and residents of a long-term care facility, and we saw our most vulnerable population in our nursing homes under siege, as the state ordered COVID-19 positive patients to be accepted into our long-term care facilities and prohibited testing as a condition of patient intake, resulting in the total deaths to date of 134 county residents and employees of said facilities. The county followed all New Jersey Department of Health procedures and guidelines while alerting state and federal officials repeatedly about critical needs within these facilities that required urgent and immediate action, and we will continue to do so to prompt overdue action on the part of the state. And as Herb again mentioned, due to lack of funding to pay for adequate testing, personnel, and resources, it has been a constant battle, and again, we thank District 24 for their insistence on getting us the resources that we need. And the voters of Sussex County have spoken via referendum. We're moving forward in our pursuit of a bipartisan investigation into the tragedy at Andover Subacute and demand all of the documents related to these incidents. As such, this board will never stand idly by while the state rewards us with a flaccid response. They are a direct contributing factor to harm to our residents, and that is the Murphy Administration and the State Department of Health. This board will continue to fight to do what is good and right within our powers to demand accountability and to protect the residents of the county. And as we navigate our way through this crisis and beyond, we're committed to the following: clear and concise communication between the county and the municipalities that we serve. The county's been praised in the media as one of the state's most cooperative counties, providing comprehensive data to the public throughout the pandemic. Currently, the county utilizes myriad modes of communication for the public, but this will be increased with more frequent updates by a dedicated individual who'll spearhead communications from the county and ensure timely messages are going to the public. And as I am no longer serving as Director or Deputy Director of the Board, this year, perhaps my most important assignment will be working directly alongside Ms. Samantha Gabriel, and we will continue to develop enhanced communication protocol to reach the public and the media, and our monthly mayor's calls will continue to help each and every municipality stay up to date on all developments in the county. Our second priority is supporting our District 24 legislators as they tirelessly push at the state level for our needs and our often forgotten corner of northwest New Jersey. There's a lot of state issues that are outside of the direct control of this board, but it's our duty to be mindful of any and all legislation that creates inequity, increases the cost of living, and infringes on the rights of the county. Often, these decisions are made in Trenton, and they deal us the largest financial blow. And make no mistake, this board is keenly aware that your rights are essential. Next, fiscal responsibility. Our county budget in 2021 represented a decrease in 1.9% or $2.2 million less than the adopted 2020 budget. That was the lowest tax levy in six years, the third lowest tax levy increase over the past 15 years. And while we did that, we were able to maintain capital improvement funding, debt service funding, and we did not waiver from our 10-year debt reduction plan. And I'm sure Anthony will discuss more about the receipt of the $27 million in American Rescue Plan funding, so I will not dwell on that, but we do know we must support county businesses that were decimated by Governor Murphy's executive orders. We must fairly compensate our county workers who worked tirelessly through the throes of the pandemic, and we must ensure all county departments are well-equipped and prepared to deliver high levels of critical services to our residents. Next, service upgrades. We continue to support health services for women, for children, for the economically disadvantaged, and to support mental health in the county. We have already strengthened health and social services by expanding our medical transportation for senior citizens, implementing new community outreach programs, expanding fire prevention services, and enhancing countywide emergency communication capabilities and cooperation with Sheriff Strata and the Office of Emergency Management. Strategic investments, we prioritized infrastructure via road resurfacing, bridge and traffic safety projects, we added 34 new miles of guide rail in Sussex County. Bridge replacements, and the voters directly supported the partially grant-funded Dennis Library renovations. Improvements to the technical school building, and enhancing the security systems here at the county college and across county facilities. Our overarching goal is to keep Sussex County safe and affordable and moving forward. We must continue to demand fair funding and accountability from Governor Murphy and his administration and the New Jersey Department of Health, working in coordination with District 24 to ensure we meet our obligations to the people of Sussex County. Never forget that each and every one of you are essential. I thank you for being with us tonight, and God bless you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Fantasia, and now to Deputy Director Carney.
Thank you, Director, it's pretty nice to hear. I first would like to thank my wife and kids for always being there for me. It's not always easy being a child of a politician. There's not really much benefit from it, it affects their life, so thank you for being here and always. I would also like to thank you all for being here, it shows you support us and you believe in us, and that humbles me. I want to thank all our staff at our county, our county employees, they make it easy for us to work and do our work, our council, working with our constitutional officers, LD24, you couldn't ask for a better group of people to work with. Working with my colleagues here on the Commissioner Board, I mean, couldn't ask for a better group of people. They slow me down, and I need to be slowed down because I like to get things done, unlike some, I don't have much bureaucracy in me, which maybe that's a good thing, maybe I bring something to the table that not everybody has. But they're always here for me to slow me down, say, hold on a second, let's not get too crazy, so I appreciate that, I do. You know, I've been here since February 2021, and didn't have a chance to get my feet wet, I was off and running, our meetings were lasting anywhere from three hours to five and a half hours, getting called a bunch of names. But you know what, that is what it is, you know, and I know I signed up for that, you know, I met with a lot of our administrators, I met with the DPW garages, all the employees to get a feel of what they needed, what could make them more successful, to understand our employees, and I think that's a good thing to have, because, you know, they are our county. These are the people who provide our services, our infrastructure, our roads, cleaning our roads, and that's what people see, right? That's what people see, that's where your taxes go, what you see is what you get. And I think we provide a lot, a lot of services that makes Sussex nice, it makes us want to come here and put their heads down at night. Now, we're a commuter county, I mean, I know myself, if I drive under an hour, I'm happy, you know, and that's one way. So it is nice, we all come back here, and I want to keep that, I want to keep that value here and have people come. So I am 100% for our employees, they need to be treated properly, it'll bring more people in here, and again, it'll make Sussex better by having that attribute. Again, I want to push for future infrastructure, maintaining our roads and bridges. At the same time, I want to keep our taxes affordable for everybody here, but again, our employees need to be compensated, they really need to be. It makes just for just a better employment, it keeps the morale up. So again, you see what you get with what you have in Sussex, I think you get a lot, we provide a lot. And that starts a lot with communication, communication's kind of lacked a little bit here at the board, and I assure you, I assure you, this is going to change. People need to hear us, they need to see what we're doing, not always the bad things about, oh, your taxes are going up. We're going to make sure that everybody hears what we're doing, and I know this board, including myself, we're going to make that happen, we're going to continue growing in Sussex, we can be the spearhead of voter integrity and so on, you know, I'm not scared, I know these guys aren't scared. I don't need to ask if any other county is going to do something first, doesn't matter to me, it doesn't, it matters what we do here in Sussex. Again, thank you all for being here, I want to congratulate Dawn Fantasia, my colleague, my running mate, my friend for her election. I also want to congratulate Anthony Fasano for being the youngest Director ever to step foot here in Sussex County, that's pretty impressive. I know we're all going to, we're going to do some good stuff this next three years, I'm excited for it. And thank you, thank you all.
Thank you, Deputy Director Carney, and thank you all for coming tonight. It's a tremendous honor to be the board's Director this year, and I'm so appreciative and thankful for the support of my colleagues here on this board, that truly means a lot, so thank you. And before I get started, I have to say thank you a few more times. And first, I need to thank Sussex County Community College for hosting us tonight in this beautiful facility. This venue has served as our Commissioner meeting location for most of the last year and has enabled us to meet and conduct the county's business safely, which I'm very appreciative for. I'd also like to thank the Newton Police Department for being here and for ensuring the safety of our meetings, thank you. I'd like to thank our county clerk, Jeff Parrott, not only for administering my oath of office for tonight, but also for being the best county clerk in the state of New Jersey, and I really mean that. The clerk's office had a historic year and continued to provide efficient services to our residents, thanks to his leadership and his talented and dedicated team. The same can be said for our county surrogate, Gary Chisano, who also continued to offer the highest level of service throughout the year, oftentimes working with residents during some of the most emotionally difficult experiences with the utmost compassion and care. I'd like to thank our county sheriff, Mike Strata, his team and our Office of Emergency Management for consistently ensuring the protection and well-being of our residents and this county. Public safety, especially now, cannot be taken for granted. It's a monumental and never constant challenge that is consistently met, thanks to him and his team here and the brave men and women in law enforcement throughout Sussex County. Thank you, Sheriff. I'd also like to thank our District 24 representatives, Senator Steve Orojo, Hal I'd also like to thank our District 24 representatives, Senators Steve Orojo, Howe Worth, and Parker Space, for being constant and effective advocates for the needs of Sussex County and the people who call it home. Steve, Parker, and Howe are as aggressive fighters as they are listeners, and I've always appreciated that and their willingness to work with us and bring resources to the county and common sense to the state. So thank you both. I want to recognize with extreme appreciation the work of our county department heads and each and every one of our county employees who have gone above and beyond, again. The work of our county employees is the engine that powers this county, and I couldn't be more appreciative for your service and commitment to this county that we love. I'd also like to thank our county administration, our county administrator Greg Poth, our county CFO Elka Yedder, our clerk to the board Terry Lyons, Suzie, Samantha, and our entire team for working with us around the clock. And finally, I want to personally thank my family and my friends. Michelle, for your constant support, which I'll always be grateful for, my not-so-little brother who's proudly serving this country in the United States Air Force, and my sister Christine, and my parents. You know, for the holidays a few weeks ago, I visited my parents like any good son would. My favorite part of the season is spending time with my family and spending time to reflect. And I got both of those worlds at the same time because, of course, mom has to take out the home videos from when we were kids. And you never know what they're going to put on. They just, you know, slip in the disc and you brace yourself and see what shows up on the screen. And just like that, there I was 23 years ago as an incoming kindergarten student with a terrible bowl haircut, getting ready for my first day of school. My parents documented this day in tremendous and painful detail, but my father, who was always on camera duty, in that moment decided to step outside and show the house that we just moved to, that my siblings and I grew up in, the street we lived on, and the community that we left New York to become a part of. It was Sussex County in 1999, and it was a very different world. But what was much more noticeable, watching those videos now so many years later, was the tremendous sense of pride that my parents had for deciding to come here and raise a family. It was affordable. It was safe, and it provided my siblings and I with good schools and better opportunities, which all these years later, I can say was definitely the right call. Affordability, safety, and opportunity is what led my family here, and we fell in love with it here, and it's been history ever since. But for all that has changed in the world since the first school day in Sussex County in 1999, affordability, safety, and opportunity remain just as important to Sussex County as it did that day. But a lot has changed in Sussex County even over the last year. In fact, it was in this very room a year ago that this Board of County Commissioners announced that it was planning its COVID-19 vaccine rollout. Think about that. Today, nearly 90,000 county residents are now fully vaccinated. It's a great metaphor for how the county's response to COVID-19 has evolved as more tools and resources and knowledge become available. Over the last year, Sussex County has strengthened its response to COVID-19, including daily reporting, vaccine and booster options available to all residents, no-cost testing available to all residents, and the bolstering of our health and social services. More so over the last year, as Commissioner Fantasia mentioned, Sussex County reiterated its commitment to fiscal stability with a budget that reflected a 1.9% decrease compared to the previous year while maintaining capital improvement and debt service funding. Sussex County upgraded services, including medical transportation for seniors, enhanced mosquito control capabilities, new community outreach programs, expanded fire prevention services, and emergency communication capabilities, argotourism programs, increased road resurfacing and traffic safety projects, while continuing to support public education and our law enforcement community. The county has also expanded our Division of Planning and Economic Development capabilities, which included formalizing the complete renovation and expansion of the Dennis Memorial Library right down the street from here. It's been an eventful year, to say the least, and I'm proud of what we accomplished together, and I'm proud to be a part of this board. Commissioner Patilla, who I hope feels better soon, is one of the most compassionate and caring people that I've just ever met. Commissioner Yardley has more experience working for this county than I do, being alive. No offense. Commissioner Fantasia is a tremendous advocate and fighter for Sussex County, who I watched lead this board honorably over the last year, while Commissioner Carney has been such a solid addition to this board, and he cares about one thing and one thing only, and that's progress. So congratulations to the both of you on a well-earned and successful reelection. And I couldn't be more honored and energized to work with this team and all of you in making Sussex County stronger and better for our residents, our staff, our businesses, our students, and our visitors. Sussex County must be prepared for the challenges and opportunities that await us in the year ahead, and there will be many. This pandemic continues to impact this nation and our state with little predictability. However, Sussex County remains as committed as it was in March of 2020 to defeat this virus, keep our residents safe, and ensure that resources are available to all who need it. And it's not March of 2020 anymore. A lot has been learned and can and should be applied to ensuring that life does not stop at the hands of this virus and that residents have the tools available to combat it. Since last month, Sussex County has been working with the New Jersey Department of Health to amplify Sussex County's testing availability and to set up a state-sponsored testing location at the Sussex County Fairgrounds through the services of our mutual testing partner, Vault Health. The New Jersey Department of Health has agreed to cover the cost of these services, and our emergency preparedness team in cooperation with the county's Office of Emergency Management has begun to put together the logistics, the logistical requirements of setting up this site at the fairgrounds, and conversations have been ongoing, including today, to work out these details. It is anticipated that this site will be able to provide PCR saliva tests and rapid antigen tests with both pre-scheduled and walk-up or drive-through options. Additional information will be provided as soon as it becomes available, and I expect that to be very shortly. And this collaboration with the New Jersey Department of Health and Vault Health reflects the next step in our response to COVID-19 with this effort more clearly aimed at ensuring testing, vaccines, and boosters are available to any resident who chooses to get it. As we know, cases are rising again, and this latest wave has resulted in spikes and significant clusters throughout the county, including in our nursing homes and long-term care facilities in Sussex County. This includes the facility formerly known as Andover Subicube. What is particularly concerning here is that the staff of these facilities have been hit hard recently. And of course, we are all aware of the past history associated with this administration's response to COVID-19 being present in our state's long-term care facilities. So our county health officials have been in regular contact with state health officials to ensure the needs of these facilities are met by the state while offering our full assistance. The state has agreed to deploy the New Jersey National Guard to nursing home facilities that are in need of assistance with maintaining infectious disease control protocols and other duties. Sussex County is working with the state to ensure proper procedures and protocols are being followed, and I thank all those involved in those efforts of keeping a constant eye on these facilities and ensuring the safety and accountability is held in these facilities. Sussex County will continue to report on the status of our long-term care facilities and our efforts with the state of New Jersey to ensure that these crucial, crucial needs are met. With that being said, we must not forget what took place in our nursing homes and the decisions made by this administration previously. Sussex County was one of the hardest-hit counties of nursing home deaths, and the decisions leading up to it, including Executive Order 103, the state response to the situation as it was unfolding, and the lack of any adequate explanation after the fact, demands answers and accountability, which still remains nowhere to be found. Keep in mind that the state is responsible for the licensing and oversight of these veteran homes and long-term care facilities. In fact, it was reported last week that this administration agreed to a $53 million settlement to be paid by the New Jersey taxpayers to settle claims of negligence and incompetence made against this administration for deaths in state-run veteran homes in another area of our state and on behalf of 119 families of veterans who died and whose deaths were attributed to COVID-19 at the start of the pandemic. And although that is deservedly good news for the families that suffered, it ends the discovery process of their lawsuit and with it the possible disclosure of evidence and answers that can help resolve why nearly 10,000 New Jersey residents of long-term care facilities died. We're exactly where we were one year ago today. There is not a single answer and not a single ounce of progress, and it's unacceptable. On November 2nd, Sussex County residents voted overwhelmingly, 81%, I believe, to allow the Board of County Commissioners to consider every legal action necessary to compel the governor of the state of New Jersey and the leadership of the New Jersey Legislature to release all public information requested by Sussex County on behalf of and by its citizens, and in furtherance of full transparency, conduct an independent, public, bipartisan legislative investigation into the government policies, regulations, and oversight of New Jersey's long-term care facilities regarding the deaths from COVID-19 of nearly 10,000 residents. I have asked county council to provide us with all options available to proceed via the legal system to accomplish exactly that. There must be justice for our residents and their families. There must be accountability and answers for what took place in our nursing homes, and there must be an assurance that it will never, ever happen again. I look forward to working with council and the board in determining the next steps of this legal process. Since my time here, it is clear that our strength and resilience here at the county comes from our county staff. This county simply could not function if it was not for their dedication and their passionate work. It was evident before the pandemic, and it really couldn't be much more evident now. Our county employees stepped up when it was most needed, and we're committing ourselves to recognize that and compensate our staff for doing so. The commissioners, with the assistance of council, have been developing plans to establish premium pay for county employees, which will be the very first action taken in the county's local recovery planning with federal American Rescue Plan funding. Working within the regulations of the Department of Treasury, our intention is to ensure that premium pay is executed in a way that maximizes eligibility and impact while minimizing hassle and complexity. I anticipate the board finalizing this within the first quarter of the year. This pandemic will end, and Sussex County must also prepare for that day and build a future, providing small business assistance, investing in our roads and bridges, much-needed rural broadband connectivity, expanding service offerings including mental health and senior citizen programs, continued investment and support for our employees, our public education, public health, public safety, communications, economic development, and long-term planning are all important goals that we have this year that I know that we can accomplish together. Most importantly, myself, this board, and this administration works for you, and every day our focus is on making Sussex County better. So if you have a problem, an idea, a solution, a concern for Sussex County, please contact our office. If you haven't been able to tell yet, we like to talk, and we'll gladly talk to you. Myself and my colleagues are also working on strategies to provide more forums and opportunities to hear from county residents and stakeholders because we know we are at our best when we are all working together. I truly can't thank you enough for your support and your trust in me. It's an honor to do this job and to do it with all of you in the county that I love. There are residents and families moving to Sussex County today, just like my family did 23 years ago, still in search of affordability, safety, and opportunity. We have to deliver on that, and I'm confident that we will. So thank you again. May God bless you, and may God bless Sussex County. Thank you so much. Now, we still have an agenda to get through. That only gets us through item 11, and we're on to item 12, which is proclamations, and there are none for this evening. Item 13 is public session from the floor. This public session is for questions and comments pertaining to agenda items only. Comments are limited to three minutes or less. When you arrive at the microphone, please state your name, municipality, and agenda topic. Is there a motion to open the floor to public comment?
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner Fantasia makes the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and the public session is now open. Is there anyone who would like to come and make a comment? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the floor to public comment?
I'll move to close.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second? Deputy Director Carney seconds. Any All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Item 14 is the approval of our consent agenda. The Board of County Commissioners of the County of Sussex has reviewed the consent agenda consisting of various proposed resolutions and determined that adoption of said resolutions is in and will further the public interest. If any commissioner would like to remove an item to be considered separately, please do so now. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda resolutions A through O?
Still move.
Second.
Commissioner Carney moves. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Do we need a voice vote? I'm sorry.
Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fisano?
Yes.
Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
Item 15 on our agenda is our appointments, and I'd like to just make one change, and that's to table item 15I pending further review and clarification. Is there a motion for item 15?
If I could ask for something to be on the next agenda.
Sure.
Of course, it's at the end. FF and GG. We could just have that in the next agenda.
Are you asking to table those items?
Yeah, just table.
Okay. Okay, so now we have a table for items 15I, 15FF, and 15GG. Is there a motion for item 15, given those provisions?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second the motion.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? Seeing none. Terry, can you please call the roll?
No, it's a motion to approve holding back those three.
Correct.
Holding back those three items.
So Commissioner Carney?
Yes.
Commissioner Fantasia?
Yes.
Director Fisano?
Yes.
And Commissioner Yardley?
Yes.
By virtue of pulling them, they're automatically held till they get relisted, Terry.
They serve, if I understand, they serve to replace or appoint, correct? Am I correct?
I don't know about I because I think that's a new appointment, but as to FF and GG, the answer is yes.
Okay. Item 16 on our agenda is our resolutions portion, and there are none. Item 17 on our agenda is our awards of contract, change orders, or bid, and there are none. Item 18 on our agenda is public session from the floor. Please note that everyone is asked to keep their comments to three minutes or less, and to please state your name and municipality when you arrive at the microphone. Is there a motion to open the floor to public comment?
Still move.
Second.
Commissioner Carney moves. Commissioner Fantasia seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries, and public session is now open. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment? Motion carries, and public session is now open. Is there anyone who would like to make a public comment?
Good evening. My name's John Dolmas, and I'm from Frankford Township. I'd like to start by congratulating Dawn and Chris and Anthony for becoming our director. I don't know if everybody's aware of it, either yesterday or the day before, an 81-year-old woman in Sparta took her dogs outside, found two giant bears, both over 400 pounds, in her garbage. Dogs took after them. One bear ran away, the second one decided to fight. Had the older dog in its jaws when the woman tried to get the dog. The bear turned on her, bit her in the leg, slashed her in the head. She required seven stitches. The bear ran away with the dog. First responders came, went out in the woods, found the dog after they were tending to her, and unfortunately, the dog didn't make it. This is on Governor Phil Murphy. He stopped the bear hunt. He stopped it with a bogus, "I'm not going to re-up" the management plan that was given to him by wildlife biologists in our state. He refuses, he says he listens to the science in, when it comes to COVID, but he refuses to listen to the science when it comes to this, you know? And this is only going to get worse, as the bear population is going to explode next spring because we had no hunt. What I like, would like from you is, if it's possible, could you draft a resolution demanding that he listen to his wildlife biologists? Our wildlife biologists in our state are some of the best in this country. They know what they're doing. So, if he would please listen to them and let them manage the bear population properly, perhaps this won't happen again, because in Sussex County, we're going to have more bears than any other county. And unfortunately, I'm afraid that if it does happen again, it's not only going to be the dog that loses its life. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you, John, and the Commissioners here are aware of that, obviously. It's quite disturbing, and I truly hate to say that we told you so. And so did his scientists. So, I think you know where we all stand on this, where our legislators stand on this. I think that's a great idea that you had. Are there any other public comments? Seeing none, is there a motion to close the floor to public comment?
So moved.
Commissioner Fantasia moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Yardley seconds. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Item 19 on our agenda is our Reminders, and I actually have two. The first being to please, please, visit the county website for all meetings, dates, and times, along with updates and the latest on just about everything county-related at sussex nj.us. Secondly, we will be having a small get-together at O'Reilly's down the street in Newton, and you're all welcome to join us if you'd like. With that, we've made it finally to item 20 on our agenda, our favorite, which is our adjournment. So, with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
I will make the motion.
Commissioner Yardley makes the motion. Is there a second?
I will second.
Deputy Director Carney makes the second. Any discussion? I just have one thing, and that's to say thank you very much. Looking forward to the year ahead. Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? Motion carries. Meeting adjourned. Thank you very much. God bless. Get home safe.